Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting, a regular meeting of the Cumberland School Committee tonight, Thursday, June 12th, 2025, at the Cumberland High School Transitional Building at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Consent agenda: Approval of minutes from regular meeting 5/22/2025, executive session meeting 5/22/2025, town council finding and subcommittee meeting 5/29/2025, special budget workshop 6/5/2025, special executive session open meeting 6/5/2025. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Consent agenda enrollment report, transportation report, may resident truancy report, school bus inspection reports 5/20/2025. We're going to re-motion the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Reporter of executive session meeting, reporter of executive session meeting on 6/12/2025, reporter of executive session votes, there were no votes taken. Vote to seal minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion to seal minutes of executive session?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Goldstein?
Second.
Second by Ms. Feather, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
That passes six to one with Mr. Dean in the negative. Personnel actions, Ms. Resick?
Hi, good evening. This evening I have three resignations, all effective June 30th, 2025. Melissa Kuzinitz, curriculum coordinator, nine to twelve, she's currently on an unpaid leave of absence this year. Vanessa Perez, paraprofessional at Garvin, and Lucia Moreno, MLL teacher at Cumberland High School. I have one unpaid leave of absence for the 25-26 school year. Carissa Rockwell, English grade eight at North Cumberland Middle School. I have two retirements this evening. After seven years of service, effective July 31st, Danielle Leet, custodian at BF Norton. And after 12 years of service, effective 7/11/2025, Francisco Ray, custodian at Cumberland Hill. In the following G6, employees were given three-year contract extensions. Mindy Thoreau, confidential assistant benefits coordinator for human resources. Asia Macron, confidential assistant to the director of special education. Roger Hamm, district support technician. Rachel Powell, Cumberland preschool center principal. And Sarah Kelly, Cumberland High School assistant principal. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Thornton?
Evening, Mike, let's do it. First up, I have a couple of BF items. And I'm going to let the first picture speak for itself. I'll let you explain what we're looking at here.
Oh, well, this is, we had earlier in the spring, we have an event that's called the Jaguar Dash, and we set up an obstacle race in the backfield at BF Norton. And it's a fundraiser for our field day. And we always sent an incentive for the kids if they raise a certain amount of money that the PE teachers and the principal have to do something ridiculous. So in the past, we've had them slimed, taped to the wall, dressing in inflatable costumes. And this year, the incentive was that they, the three of them had to kiss a pig if they had the right amount of fundraising. So today, this glorious pig came to BF Norton and gave kisses to both our PE teachers and Mrs. LaRiviere. So that was a delight. And then you want me to go to it? And I'm also here today, I was invited here today because I am going to talk about the BF Norton Running Club. And I'm really excited to kind of share what we've been doing for the last three years at BF Norton with this running club. We started it, and it's run by myself and Elizabeth Simeo. We're not run, we're not coaches, we're not PE teachers, I'm the speech therapist in the building, and she is a first grade teacher. But we're both are runners, and, you know, we both have felt the camaraderie that you feel when you are out for a recreational run, or you're at the beginning, or the finish line of a community event, and just how you kind of feel that sense of community. And so we are trying to figure out, what's a way that we can do that at BF Norton so that our kids can have that same kind of experience? So we thought, well, maybe we can figure out a way to do a running club. So in that cause, we decided to send out flyers to all of the fourth and the fifth grade students, just to see if they might be interested in a free morning running club. And the response was overwhelming. We really didn't know, because we're an early start school, how many students would want to get up and be at school at 7:30 in the morning for it. But the response was overwhelming. So we started it three years ago. Our club meets every Monday and Wednesday, 7:30 to 8:15. If it's nice out, we get to run outside. Otherwise, we, these kids run so many laps inside our gym, it's unbelievable. It's six laps, or it's five laps equals a quarter of a mile, no, not even a quarter of a mile, it's 30 laps for a mile. So we have 25 students running around that gymnasium, tracking their miles for them every single day. And it's unfortunate, because our gym is small, and there's only two of us, that we can only have 25 kids in the group, because we have a huge waiting list, because so many more students would like to be able to participate in it. And I think what we want you to know, that it's not just a running club for running. We have a purpose for this running club as well. It's a free inclusive program, and it works on academic success, it helps with emotional regulation, it helps with school belonging and community service. Our teachers have told us that students that go to a running club, their performance has improved when they get to class that day. And that, you know, studies know that if you begin the day with physical activity, if you get that sensory regulation, it helps improve attention. So we're really glad to see that. Our club is entirely free for the families that are involved. And I think as a school committee and as educators, we think about equity a lot of times, and this program is equity at its finest. Anybody in our school can belong to this group. You don't, it doesn't matter what your background is, it doesn't matter what your income is, it doesn't matter what your ability is, everybody is welcome. The only requirement is that you can get there at 7:30, that you have proper shoes, and that you have a water bottle. That's it. Everybody belongs, everybody's the same. We try to foster community. The kids that are there are so encouraging of other kids. I think they'll speak to you about it a little bit, too. They cheer for each other, they're proud of their own accomplishments, and they want to do better. It's really nice, it's really nice. I think what we also saw in our first year is we had some newcomers to the country, MLL students that joined our group. And running is great, because running needs no translation. There's no words in running. So these kids got to participate through action and not through words. They got to be part of the group. We saw those kids get more confidence, they started to be able to establish more friendships, and it helped more with the classroom engagement as well. The other benefit that we saw was improved attendance. We've had some students with more chronic absenteeism, and we were surprised that some of these kids were interested in joining running group. It's the best thing they did, because they started coming to school. It started just on the days that was running club, because they saw that as an opportunity to be part of something. And I think they thought as something that was positive, so that they could be part of a group. And it's a reason to look forward to school. For these students, that running club wasn't just exercise, it was just a way that they could have some kind of positive point of connection with the other people in the school. And I think that speaks volumes for kind of what we're trying to do as a group. Now, lastly, the last thing we do is we try to do some kind of community service, too. So the last two years, we have organized ugly sweater race at BF Norton in the backfield. And it's a, it's not just a fun event, we try to get as many of the students involved as possible, but it's also a fundraiser. Entry to the race is students need to either donate a dollar or a canned good for entry. And what's so nice is we had a lot of families that donated several cans, because they knew some families couldn't afford the cans, so that more kids would be able to run. This year, we had over 60% of our student body running that race, and we raised over $300 and provided over 400 canned goods for the BF Norton family food pantry, which I think is great, because it shows the kids that we just don't run for fun, we run for service, and that service shows that we're proud of our school community, and we love to see that. We're really proud of our runners, and I think when we look at them, we see that they're proud, too, which is great. Our running club embodies everything that we want in our students: wellness, inclusion, leadership, and service. And we do this with no cost to the school, no cost to the families. We're grateful for all of the support we get from school administration, it's been really nice. We have special guests sometimes that come and run with the kids, like Dr. Thornton's come a few times, the mayor's come several times, too. And we have guest teachers, sometimes teachers will come and run along with the kids, and it makes the kids feel special, and that's really important. So we think we're grateful for the support that we've gotten from the administration, and we kind of hope that the model that we're doing at BF Norton could somehow be a model for other schools, maybe in the district as well, because we think it's been a really positive thing for our school, and we hope that others could do it as well. So I know we have a couple of our runners that want to talk. You want to mickey? I'm just going to have to hold it for you.
Hi, my name is Mikey Connors, I'm 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade at BF Norton. I've been a member of Running Club for three years now and love it. The coaches are Mrs. Lynch and Mrs. Simeo. I'm thankful that they put their time into doing this for me and the other students. Running Club helped me by encouraging me to run more, which led me to more healthy habits. It is a good mindset to have before the school day, and is a good way to be with friends while exercising. This year, I reached my goal of 50 miles. I wonder if the teachers can push me to get even more miles next year. Thank you.
Hold it, is that good? Let me hold it.
Hi, my name is Kylie Delahose, I have a fifth grader at BF Norton Elementary School. I will be talking about how Running Club has benefits for me. Running Club has many benefits for me. It gives me a sense of responsibility. I have to wake up early in the morning, prepare my lunch, pick, and pick out my outfit, and shower in the evening. I also find myself eating more protein and making healthier food choices. I eat bananas, strawberries, yogurt, and even drink protein shakes. It has also helped me play other sports better. I can run during soccer games for longer periods of time without running out of breath. In addition, it has helped me with my endurance during dance, especially with dance competition season. Running has also helped me prepare for the school day. I feel energized and can pay attention better on mornings that I run. Thank you for your time.
I just want to say thank you, that was amazing, and to all the students that you engage in this, that's spectacular, so thank you to you all.
And also, if I could add, when the new BF Norton building is built, there is a plan for a running loop around the building. I think it's five laps for a mile, not quite a track, but it's a five-lapper, so that's going to be in the plan. So next up, we have Mr. Crowley with some athletic news.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, good evening. It's great to see the involvement that you have with our student, students at such a young age to get them involved in running, it's a great community, so thank you. I'm excited to be back before you once again, as we crowned another state champion this past weekend at Brown University. Our girls' track team outdueled a very talented field, including Wes Warwick, in a 69-64 victory, in a meet that took over two days. It was a, we got it underway on Saturday, and then weather hit, and lightning, and rain, and that stuff, so we just got done the shot put, getting ready for the 110 meter finals, and we had to come back Sunday to conclude the meet. And what a, what a meet it was, it came down to the last event, the four-by-four, for our girls. We had PRs up and down the line, school records all over the place. Coach Goodrow stated to one of his reporters that it's about quality, not quantity. We had 17 athletes compete, and every point mattered. We grabbed points where a one here, or a three here, that, and those are little things that make up points, and a meet that Wes Warwick has won three consecutive times with future Olympians on their squad, and the Ray sisters are going to the University of Georgia, they are amazing. But so is our, so are our kids, our kids are amazing, and our coaching staff as well. We have a couple of state champions, I'll get to them after. Kids who scored points in the state meet, Kylie Defusco, Charlie McHugh, Peyton Goulding, Rose Temisto, Kylie Defusco, again, Cece Ludwig, Peyton, I already mentioned Bryn Patterson, Maddie Coyne, and Juliana Hassanfris all scored points for us in the meet. Also competing, Kiara Pyris, Maya Garland, Molly Anisvet, Peyton Jollica, Emily Greve, and Elena Demelis as well. So those young ladies who are, represented us in the state meet, shout out to our coaches, our head coach, Coach Goodrow, who's also our throws coach. Coach Carpenter is our distance coach. Coach Hooper is our sprints coach, she cannot be here tonight, as her son is an All-American at the University of Wisconsin. He placed 16th in the hammer throw out in Eugene, Oregon yesterday, so congratulations to him and her as well. And our jumps coach, Coach Shepard Lewis. So without further ado, our state champions, our first girls' title since 1989, our girls' state championship outdoor track team.
I have a question, are you selling those shirts anywhere?
I don't know. She didn't win this event, but she set the school record in the discus in Peyton Goulding. And on Saturday, all her throws were the 41 feet, and actually, I witnessed this throw by her, 41 feet, seven and a half inches. She'll be attending the University of New Hampshire next year to continue throwing, and it's kind of retribution for her, because last year, a young lady from Bayview got you on her last throw, right? I know we don't want to talk about that, but, you know, she worked very, very hard and a great product of our throws program. Peyton Goulding is our state champion in the shot put, congratulations. And stop, you've heard this one before, but the next young lady won her ninth individual state title as an individual, her third team title. She'll be attending the College of Charleston in South Carolina. She set a school record in the 1500 meter at 4:2903, and she went out blazing, and she won by the whole back stretch, won by 10 seconds. But not to be done yet, she set a school record and a state meet record. She broke a record that was by Samantha Gurwitt from Wesleyly, was set in 1988, a great distance runner. She ran the 800 in 2:0930, which is equivalent of a 420 mile. I've said it about her before, and I'll say it again, probably the greatest track athlete ever come out of Cumberland, Kylie Defusco.
As I call up the principal, they'll say some nice things about our retirees, and then they all get this wonderful beach back. So without further ado, let's call up Mr. Costa for the first.
This one hurts a little bit. Some educators leave a mark. Ms. Beebo, she will leave a legacy. For over 40 years, 29 in the Cumberland School Department, Ms. Beebo has been a gentle and steady force in education. A teacher whose kindness and positivity has impacted us all, her calm presence, her warm smile, her unwavering belief in others, make her the kind of person who lights up a hallway just by walking through it. She's not just respected, she's cherished. Ask anyone at CHS about Beebo, and you'll hear the same thing, she's the kindest person I know. Whether she's helping our students navigate a tough day, offering a word of encouragement to a colleague, or organizing a quiet gesture of appreciation for someone who needs it, she does it all with grace, humility, always positive, always positive. Before every professional development day, without fail, Ms. Beebo would send a message about making sure the staff had snacks and treats. It was never about her, it was about making others feel supported, seen, and cared for. That spirit of generosity is just who she is. In 2024, we all braced for a bittersweet goodbye, but some of the best news we received last year was that after Ms. Beebo announced her retirement, she changed her mind and decided to come back for one more year. I'm holding out. Ms. Beebo, are you teetering? Her return wasn't just a bonus, she was a gift. Ms. Beebo, your impact on our school community will be felt for decades to come. I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to deliver this, as you've been with our school department for 29 years. So I went around today, and I asked teachers to clear their minds and just give me one thought when I tell you something, and all I said to them was, "Ms. Beebo," and these are the responses I received. I love her, she's the sweetest woman in the world. She's giving, she sees people, she sees all people universally, that's just who she is, she sees all people. She's awesome, she's a sweetheart, she's the sweetest thing, she has an infectious spirit, she's genuine, she's the nicest person. Some people related you to a warm blanket. One person said, "You're the nicest person I ever met in my life," but then went on to say that you were so nice that they couldn't believe that that's who you really, who you were. That was Scott Carpenter, by the way. Every kid loves her, she's dedicated to kids, she's kind. And one person even said that after her first year, she was thinking about quitting, but you're the one who sat down and talked her through that, and she's still with us today. You're positive, you're amazing, you're kind-hearted, you always go the extra mile. You are true good, and few people are like you. You're outrageously generous, I was even told a story that you go out and you get snacks according to what each individual kid likes. And today, this afternoon, I heard about, which I didn't even know about, that there's a line outside your door, and the kid shows up, and you know which snack they are, which snack belongs to them. I don't know if you know this, but your classroom is known as the Beebo Bodega. So Ms. Beebo, with all that said, from me and from your colleagues, thank you so much for everything you've done for us.
I have to say, I was brought up in Cumberland, I lived in Cumberland my whole life. I went to school in Cumberland, I saw new schools being built, when North Cumberland was built, when this trans was built. It was my first year here, graduated from here. When I started working in Bellingham, my goal was to always return to Cumberland, to return all the goodness that they shared with me, that I could share that with this community. I feel honored and blessed to have worked in Cumberland, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much.
It's hard to put into words the impact Susan Brady has had on Cumberland High School, because her work has never been about fanfare. It's been about people, and it's been about students. It's been about showing up every single day with compassion, patience, and a belief in what's possible. As a proud professional working in the trade program, Ms. Brady has spent time guiding students as they learn to navigate the world independently. She's taught them skills, yes, but more than that, she's treated every single one of them with the utmost kindness and respect. And that is what leaves a lasting impression. Walk into perks in the morning, and they'll find her. Ride along her students, teaching them how to prepare food, how to greet a customer, how to handle multiple orders. She didn't just help students gain job skills, she helped them believe they belonged. Susan's influence extends far beyond her students, she has modeled for all of us the kind of care and dignity that should define our work. Her presence has made our school a better place, one where relationships matter and respect is non-negotiable. We will surely miss Ms. Brady, and while retirement is a joyous occasion, I am only saddened by the idea that the next group of students will not have the opportunity to work with her. Ms. Brady, thank you for your unwavering dedication, for your commitment to our students, and for the quiet, powerful way you've led by example. You will be deeply missed and always remembered. Thank you so much.
I, it's been an honor to work for Cumberland Schools. It's been amazing, I've met so many wonderful people, and just so grateful that I was able to, you know, enjoy my time here, help as many kids as I could, and, you know, it's been a pleasure. I'm going to miss it very much, but thank you.
Next up, I have Principal Carter from Garvin.
So I am so grateful, and I feel so lucky that I've worked with many of our retiring educators tonight. But tonight, I am talking about two. I'm going to start with Brenda Bush. It is an honor to share my gratitude for everything that Brenda has done for the Cumberland School Department, but of course, especially Garvin School, over her 30 years of service. Brenda is a positive force. She lights up our building. Whether she's working with students or her fellow educators, she inspires those who are around her, and she motivates everyone. Whenever I am in her classroom, the kids are so excited. And oftentimes, I am lucky enough to sub in her classroom when she is out, when we don't have a substitute teacher. And it's one of my favorite experiences, because I get to go in and I get to hear because I get to go in and I get to hear directly from her students what they're learning about. And they share with so much positivity everything that is happening in their classroom. They tell me what's happening and why it's important. My favorite time to substitute in her classroom, though, is during reading. I have learned from her students everything there is to know about Balto and Idarod. I've learned everything about tsunamis. I've learned about, I don't even understand the story, but a story about talking dogs and their conflicts. And the joy that they share these stories and the details that they remember shows me the impact that Brenda has in her classroom. They care about what they're learning about, and that's a tribute to the skills that she has. And I know that she has inspired many of the educators in our building, and so her work will not stop when she leaves those doors in a few days. So I'm so grateful for everything she has done and everything her work will continue to do when she is gone. So, Brenda, thank you.
I'm a little short, so. Thank you very much. I do feel very honored to have been part of the Cumberland School Department. I also proudly say that I was also a graduate of Cumberland. So there are many of us that have become teachers. I love my job more than anything, and I love my students even more. So it was very much a privilege for me to be able to do this every day, and I thank you very much. Thank you, Michelle.
All right, and the second retirement from Garvin is Jao Tasty. John is incredible. He is, or was, part of a power team. Last year, Bella Martins, our custodian, retired, and I was so sad to hear that John was shortly behind her, because I have heard from multiple people that they have been... Others, buildings have tried to poach both of them because of their amazing work. So John is our night custodian, and he sometimes is a miracle worker. I know that if Will is here, he doesn't want to hear this part, but if something is broken, before I even have a chance to put in a maintenance ticket, it is miraculously fixed by the morning. There are many things that I will be frustrated about because it's not working properly, or it's causing a disaster, and before I can even express that frustration to anyone, it's fixed. He goes above and beyond every single night, and when I walk in the morning, I feel confident that everything's taken care of. So I don't know what we will do without him. I'm sure we will carry on. He's not here tonight, but I told him I would take his tote with me and make sure that he gets it tomorrow night.
And next up, I have Rachel Powell.
Good evening, everybody. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Karen as we navigated the chaos of COVID together. At that time, I was still teaching at Garvin, and I'm not sure how, but somehow I was given the task of teaching her all things Google, which sounds really simple. But then I learned, before you could teach her anything Google, you really need to teach her how to turn on the computer first. But in all honesty, it was one of my most fond memories of COVID teaching. Fast forward a few years, and I am lucky enough to now serve as the principal of the building that Ms. Karen has taught at for the last twenty-three years. In those twenty-three years, she has taught hundreds of children how to share, take turns, say please and thank you, and my favorite, not to eat the glue. And that's not even including the patience it takes to survive twenty-three years of snack time chaos. Ms. Karen, your kindness, humor, and love for your students has left a permanent mark on this school. And while you still cannot share a Google Doc, you know how to share your love for our preschool. You'll be missed every day. Congratulations on a well-deserved retirement.
I want to thank everyone in the Cumberland School Department. It's been a wonderful experience. It's bittersweet, but it's good. But I hope to return and sub. So I can do that without using the Googles. Thank you, thank you very much.
And last but not least, I have Ms. Vaughn for one announcement.
Good evening. On behalf of the faculty, students, and families of community school, I'd like to express heartfelt gratitude for Mrs. Cindy Belshi. After thirty-six remarkable years of nurturing young minds, we're honored to recognize the retirement of Mrs. Belshi, a beloved Grade Two teacher whose impact will be felt for generations to come. Throughout her career, Mrs. Belshi has been the embodiment of dedication, collaboration, and focus. She's guided countless seven- and eight-year-olds through their earliest academic journeys, helping them not just learn how to read, write, and count, but how to be curious, compassionate, and confident. Her classroom has always been more than a place of learning. It's been a safe, joyful space where every child was encouraged to shine and where every milestone, no matter how small, was celebrated. Colleagues admire her for her unwavering commitment and the wisdom she so generously shares. Parents have known her for her honest communication and tireless support. And her students, many grown now, remember her as the teacher who challenged them to achieve and made them believe that they could do anything. As she closes this chapter and begins a new one, we extend our deepest gratitude. Thank you, Mrs. Belshi, for your years of extraordinary service. Your legacy lives on in every child that you've inspired.
And last but not least, we have the construction update, Mike. So, a community is on schedule. This is the view of the old cafeteria in the basement of Community, if you remember that. This would be the middle view right here in the hallway. Here's the right side, here's the left side. You can see the new flooring is in, the ceiling's wrapping up. It's really coming along down in the basement. We also are fixing a leak that's probably over twenty years old. We found the source, and we're fixing it. Very exciting, we're fixing the leak. Next up, here you can see an example of the old floor. Will's team already waxed it, this room's ready to go. Here's the common area, all buttoned up, new flooring in. The gym has new floor, it's also lined now for basketball and other sports. That's done. This is like a concrete bunker in the back that kind of houses the HVAC equipment, that's all in. And here we have new doors going in on the exterior of the building. These are really old doors at Community, so those are being swapped out for new doors. Next, exciting news, the windows came in. These came from Poland, and they're here. They're very exciting. They have a blue backing, you really can't see right now the tapes on it, but they're really nice, the first set went in. So that's gonna really make the building pop. So that's exciting, that came in. And there they are, there are the windows. And on to Garvin, our second playground. They demoed Garvin's playground quickly, the new one's going in. Probably done in a couple of weeks. And then we're on to Ashton for the last playground, so very exciting. Those are all moving along as planned. And last but not least, I'll just give you a scope. This will be our busiest summer of the four years we've been doing this. It's really kind of a lot, when you think about it. We're gonna race to finish Community. We have six science labs being renovated at both McCourt, and six labs being renovated at North. The transbuilding first floor, the preschool, we're demoing more for the small bathrooms. We're putting those in, some flooring as well, some ceiling work. Transition building, second floor, for the high school, they get that back, that's all being renovated on the inside. That's being done. Ashton School Playground, as I mentioned, is being done. CHS is going from fluorescent lights to LED lights. That's being done this summer. And also BF Norton shovel in the ground. We think probably August, probably have an event with the kids in September, like the shovel with the pictures. But really, it's late summer, we're starting it. So that's exciting. So, a lot to think about here with construction. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Any questions for Dr. Thornton? We appreciate it. Reports of standing committees. Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the Fiscal Subcommittee did meet earlier this evening. We have seventeen resolutions. This is what happens when you get to the end of the year and planning for the next year. We tend to have a lot of resolutions come our way. So we will go over them, and we also have payment of the bills. And of course, the information that was just shared by Dr. Thornton with all the projects that are going to happen over the summer was given to us with the facilities report as well. So they'll have a very busy season, but they have just hired their staff, and they should be in good shape for that.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update, Ms. Feather.
No, we have not met yet in June. Our next scheduled meeting is the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee. I did meet with the Assistant Superintendent and his team. They caught me up to speed what's been going on with the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee. And we will meet again in August to continue the talk on the block schedule for the Cumberland High School. District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update, Ms. Shea.
Yep, we're actually gonna be meeting again in September.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Hi, President Kent, how are you this evening?
I just wanted to take a second, on behalf of the Town Council, to congratulate the retirees. Their stories are absolutely fantastic, and you could actually see the energy in them still. So I want to congratulate all the retirees. Also, on behalf of the Town Council, I'd like to recognize those athletes, all the meetings I've been to. It never surprises me anymore how successful athletic programs are, so kudos to you. And finally, I just want to wrap up with one for the administration, for the excellent ceremony you put on last night. I thought the speeches were great, everything went flawless. So congratulations to that. And finally, you, the school committee, thank you for your cooperation during the budget season. It's a tough time for everybody, tough decisions are made, but it seems like we get through it civilly and professionally, and it's a credit to you all, so thank you.
Thank you, President Kent, appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? I'm so sorry, I forgot to say, please state... No, come on up. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Andrea Friedland. I am a teacher here at Community, but I'm also a resident at Forty-seven Greenfield Road. I have written to every single one of you up there about the earlier times for community school, as well as Ashton and Cumberland Hill. It's not like I'm only asking for one school, I'm asking for everyone to go back to the pre-COVID times. I can tell you that, as a teacher, getting dismissed starting at 3:30, 3:40, we are losing students because of doctor's appointments, so I'm already losing instructional time, we all are. We also have a lot of issues with subs. Right, Mrs. Vaughn? Because we are a late school, so not everyone wants to come because they also have their own children that are going to activities. We also run into a big issue with our field trips. And I have written to all of you. All of us run into the same problem, that if we are a late school, we have to start after 9:30, and we have to be back here in Cumberland for the buses for the other schools. Totally get that, but they are really condensing our availability in the state of Rhode Island. Yes, we are the smallest state. However, it's very difficult to get anywhere in the bus. As you all know, they have a speed limit. We are really, right now, community school ourselves, we have gone to the zoo, K1, 2, and now 3. That's a lot of animals that they're looking at. And there's only so much we can do with our curriculum with the time constraints that we're on. So I'm just asking you respectfully to really think about the curriculum, the students in all of the later schools, and if we can go back to the pre-COVID times, we would all greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Old business, discussion and our vote to approve the 2025-2026 start and end times. Dr. Thornton?
I'm sure, tonight I have Ms. Walton here and Mike Chandler, the other half of what I call the transportation brain in Cumberland. A few weeks back, we did talk about looking at pushing things fifteen minutes for the two Ls in the middle, as you recall. We did look at it, but you'll hear about it in a second, how right now, it just seems like something we can't do. What I'm recommending tonight to you to consider would be to keep the time that they are, with the exception of the preschool with the Wednesday and the Friday switch for the AM. Essentially, we did take a hard look at the fifteen minute, but there were at least five challenges that I'll have the team talk about, and they were happy to answer questions. Before I do that, that's part one. I know also, there was talk last meeting about you wanted to, I think, talk about when Socket, they had had a company, do some work for them. I did call the superintendent and heard back from him today, and that is something you could certainly do at some point in the future. When Socket actually had a combo, they actually went out for, had a company look at them for bus times and also for boundaries, did both. Although I'll caution you, it was not inexpensive for one Socket. They're larger, but it was about $130,000 for one Socket. You'd probably say probably two-thirds of that for our kind of bill for that kind of thing, but it was something the superintendent really thought was worthwhile. So if you ever want to consider that, that's something to think about. And also, at the end, we will talk about field trips. That's also something I want to discuss with you. So first, if the team of Tracy and Mike could just take us through the thinking behind... I tasked you with the idea of trying to push things fifteen minutes for the Ls in the middle. Can you talk about that for us?
Good evening. As Dr. Thornton had asked us to review some of these times, one of the things that we thought about, because if we're talking about pre-COVID times, the middle schools were running a little bit earlier. We did have additional buses back then. So, looking at that, looking at the fleet times to see where they were, it seemed that it would be easy enough just to move the middle schools back, bring up the Ls, bring those back. But when we're looking at that, looking at some of the GPS data that's provided to us now through Durham, and just looking at what the current schedules are, seeing when the buses are arriving, we find that a couple of the buses are still late. As we're going through some of this, at the end of the year, we don't have access to everything yet, so we're still rolling up students, we're looking at where the programs are. So, we have about ninety percent of the information that we're looking for. I mean, to try to jam all this and get some accurate results of what we would try to do in a few weeks is kind of difficult. So, the approach that we took, we're trying to figure out what some of the issues were with buses that were coming in close to the last bell time. And there's a number of those, so we have that struggle that we have to get over. One of the things, when we started talking about the pushing the middle schools back to be able to roll some of the elementaries back, was looking at what the current times were for gaps between the schools. Ironically, one of the things that had come up was Durham had requested that. They would like to try to squeeze or add, because some of the runs between the high school, middle school, middle school, elementary school, they're looking for an additional forty-five minutes of time. Or not additional, but forty-five minutes of time distributed across all of those areas. So as we started looking at some of those, we found some areas that there is a little bit of time that's there, but the two to three buses in certain tiers were a problem. And then we noticed that the afternoons created a little bit more of a problem. So, as something that we thought was gonna be as simple as enough is maybe just moving those times back, maybe to try to get to 9:05 for that fourth tier. It's kind of premature to make a decision right now and say, "I think that we can make it." So typically, we end up working with Durham to try to come up with these plans. And it does, you know, take four, six, eight weeks. There's a lot of things going on at the end of the school year, which makes it a little bit more difficult. Durham currently is trying to work through the programming for ESY. So, trying to run those scenarios to get that completed, and then to try to move and get some more efficiencies out of the bussing so that we can pick up that fifteen minutes or even ten minutes is quite the task right now.
Can you also talk about the mini-buses and how that was an impact?
So, most of our mini-buses are at capacity, and right now, they're tight getting to and from the school. Some of them even arrive after the last bell because they're picking up program students who are out of district, or out-of-district students who are not in their home school. So they have a further way to go from their pickup to where the child goes to school. There's also gonna be a new program that's starting at community school next year, and student meetings are still underway. They go on till the end of the year. They go on till the end of the school year. And right now, we're waiting to hear from them where these students will be placed to see if the fleet that we have now can even accommodate the students that are being added to this new program.
Can you talk about road construction, how that may play a factor in this?
We're having discussions around that with Durham. With the unknowns of the bridge replacement on Diamond Hill Road, we can see how wonderful that the Menden Road has been with us. You know, traffic is backed up all the time. And looking at what the traffic is going to come from through the rotaries, because we have some buses that come out of the second tier of the Ls, the third tier of the Ls, to bring those up to the community school area, which is, if they're late through that area, then add the construction down at BF Norton and Broad Street. Not really sure what that's going to look like, so we can't say for certain that there'll be no delays through that. I mean, some of the times that we come through or what we see with some of us program buses that come from that side, that have to bring students up, they're relatively long runs. So if we're trying to get them out of the south side of town, get them to the north side of town, that's an unknown that we really can't answer yet.
Now, I know there was a question about field trips. So back in the fifteen-through-eighteen contract with Durham, Durham had added thirty-six free field trips that we spread across all the different schools. That hasn't been in the last couple contracts. However, the timeframe that field trips can run is across all schools. So field trips run from nine-fifteen to one-thirty. They can push it to one-forty-five because we use all of our buses for the high school. So they can't really go much after one-forty-five. They sometimes can start a little bit earlier, so they could really start a field trip at eight-thirty, but all schools across the board have to be back by one-thirty.
So just to wrap it up and go to questions, the current thinking is to recommend the schedule I have in front of me, which is really the same schedule, but also talking to the team, they realize once BF Norton is online and there's a new boundary, that would be the time, they think, to have some work looking at this and maybe changing the entire system. But right now, we're recommending the current schedule, except the change of the preschool from the Wednesday to the Friday for the, just the PM session.
Questions from the committee? I think I saw Mr. Bacon, Ms. Feather, Ms. Smith, Ms. Goldstein.
Thank you. So I think it is absolutely ludicrous that we are constantly allowing Durham to decide what we do, how we do it. We pay Durham, Durham works for us. We make the decisions, they need to work for us. If, and I've spoke to the schools, if the schools want to go back to the pre-construction times, that is what we need to do, okay? Durham needs to figure out how to make it work for us.
Dr. Thornton?
I think what we're saying is, if you do that, given the size of the fleet, we will be late. That's just a fact. We're going to be late.
They're late now, constantly. So Durham needs to figure things out, not us.
You can do what you want. You're the committee. We're recommending this schedule. You can go nine-oh-five, and that's fine.
Oh, all the people can talk, and then I'll come.
Ms. Feather, Smith?
Okay, kind of a, probably a stupid question, but at the very beginning, you were mentioning the, you know, you were looking at the buses that were late. And I was just wondering, that data point, you know, us looking at the buses that are late right now, does that data, how does that data point actually figure in? Because wouldn't we be starting earlier if we were, if our start times were earlier? It just didn't quite make sense to me, so I just wanted clarification there.
So we're not moving the high school times? So you're taking, you're only moving the middle and the two elementary tiers? So you're not gaining any time between the high school and the middle school? There's a couple of runs that, for North Cumberland, for instance, that aren't children that go into the program, like going around the reservoir, that's about a forty-five-minute run. So if they leave the high school here at seven-ten to go around the reservoir, they're going to be fairly close to being late to North Cumberland. So if you move the North Cumberland time fifteen minutes earlier, it would be late every day.
And there's no way to add a bus to that, right?
That's going to be the key. If you, you can pretty much adopt anything that you would want, but it will come at a cost for bussing. Because when you go back to COVID times, when we were looking at bussing then, since then, two buses have been reduced from that. So occasionally Durham would have a bus that would fill in when they were late. But one of the things that had happened during COVID, when we were trying to split the schools up, you know, we had morning sessions, afternoon sessions, and then when we started looking at the bussing, we had a lot of bleed over of students that were walkers that were taking the bus. So when we looked at what you had in plans for walking distances, there was a number of students that were on there. So as we had to tighten that up for the A and B day schedule, we were able to determine, you know, who was using it, had some conversations with the families, and then that made some additional efficiencies. With those efficiencies, some of the buses did come off back then. So when you had that, you had the shift of time from nine o'clock, nine-oh-five, and then nine-fifteen, you can absolutely make any of those things work, but you're not going to be able to get it with the current bus numbers that we have.
For math, each bus around eighty-five thousand, give or take.
Thank you. When we reduced the two buses, and I wasn't here pre-COVID, but I do remember lots of conversations, and you just mentioned it, a lot of that was picked up from efficiency, and we were still doing the same times. And I believe, like, one of the efficiencies and one of the issues that we've always come up with is, and which I don't understand why Durham would even discuss BF Norton, is what, two buses at BF Norton? The majority of those students walk. Whether we wait until 2027 because of BF Norton, I'm going to use Mr. Bacon's word, is somewhat ludicrous. We shouldn't even be considering that from Durham as something that could impact us, considering there are only two buses that are involved with that. And, you know, I understand with the traffic and the bridges, but Menden Road's going to finish, Diamond Hill is going to start, we're going to be in the same boat that we've all been in, except they're going to keep a lane on each side of Diamond Hill. And they didn't do that all the time and give us much to work with on Menden Road. And on top of that, we had water line after water line and breakage and problems with the roads and repairs. So to me personally, I think that Diamond Hill will run a little bit smoother than the Menden Road has, and Menden Road really got congested. So just some thoughts in my mind on it. The other one I want to point out is, you know, we just received the May report of the Durham buses. Almost every single month when we receive that report, we're not having problems with the middle school bussing. The timing has been, and I think North Cumberland Middle School in May was a hundred percent. So that means they're there, and not even in the first window. That's a hundred percent, not even including that first window time like we're looking at with others. And just give me a moment, please. And we also had twenty-five doubled runs, yet we pay for these other buses. Why are we having such high numbers in double runs? We have to find a better way to work and have Durham work for us in this situation. And we promise these students, and we promise these schools, every single year when we discuss it with the construction, when it's done, we're going back.
Ms. Goldstein, and then I think Mr. Bacon? I haven't looked this. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Goldstein, Ms. Shea, sorry, then Mr. Bacon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With community at the high school right now, it's my understanding that every single student is a bust student. When they return to their home school, not every student will be a bust student. Is there going to be any saving of a bus, bus space with them coming back and having actual walkers?
Some of those, if you want to take it, but there's not very many walkers at community school. It's really just that back Sun Valley Drive area, because you can't walk anyplace else. So essentially, it was one bus that was kind of shared between some runs that brought them up to here.
Ms.
Yeah, I just wanted to also add, in consideration with, you know, it didn't happen that long ago, the Broad Street renovation project that had happened down in District One, that also impacts a lot of the traffic. So if that's going to kind of mirror what we're seeing when it comes to the new BF Norton, adding on the traffic situation down there as of right now, it's already horrendous, given the fact that we have BVP not that far down the street from us. I definitely agree with, you know, Ms. Smith and Mr. Bacon. Again, with all due respect to everybody north of two-ninety-five, but the valley, we desperately need another bus. And we do have a ton of kids at McCourt also that are, I'm sure, would very much appreciate a ride to school versus having to walk in awful weather. But I just kind of wanted to add that as well. I mean, I know we talk about Menden Road and this construction and Diamond Hill, but the valley has also seen a sneak peek of that already with the renovation project that had already completed.
Okay, so, because Mr. Dean hasn't spoken yet. Mr. Dean, Mr. Bacon?
I just want to say a hundred percent agree that the schools need to go back to their normal times before COVID. I mean, if we had it budgeted before COVID, we should have kept it budgeted and kept that money in hide until it was time to use it again after COVID. I hear from people all the time telling me that it's a hardship, that their kids getting back so late and leaving for school so late is a hardship, that it doesn't mirror their work times. They have to constantly find people to pick their kids up or drop their kids off at the bus stop. So there's no reason that we shouldn't have all the elementary schools starting at the same time.
Mr. Bacon?
So in regard to the late bussing too, now, when community leaves, when community leaves the high school, there shouldn't be that much of bussing. The time of bussing shouldn't take as long, because there's a lot of time lost going from here down two-ninety-five and then to go into that neighborhood. You're now going to have the buses already at the school, and they're going three miles, four miles, right? So we're already going to save a lot of time doing that alone. I make a motion that we go, we do not go with this recommended schedule, and we go with the pre-construction, the pre-COVID schedule, the fifteen-minute prior time. And then we get Durham in here, and we try to figure out and come to a conclusion on what we need to do. For them to help, they need to work for us. It's just.
Dr. Thornton?
I think we can certainly do that. Just one thing to consider, we are the lowest-funded district in Rhode Island. That's one of the realities of this, where our bussing budget's around four million, give or take. But we can add buses and do what you want to do, but all we're saying is, we've really looked at this. We do look at this a lot, and we will be late if you do this without adding buses.
Mr. Bacon?
And just to touch on this again, we, I met with Mario Correno, okay? He is the, he is on a ride, and he is the chair of the Lincoln School Department. By looking at the bussing, they determined that by going to earlier times, they were able to get students back, many, many students back from charter schools, BVP, Davies, schools like that, back into them, giving them more money into, back to the school system. This is what we need to do.
Ms. Feather, then Ms. Smith.
Okay, two things. So I, of course, am trying to find a way to get us back to, to get us back to the pre-COVID times as well. I think that's no secret. So two things I want to say. One, and I know I've brought this up before, but I feel like I have to bring it up again. Have we utilized AI in any way to try to optimize our bus routes?
I have not, whether Durham has. I can't speak to Durham. We use versatrains to be able to do that, and we run different routes through that.
Well, I do wonder whether or not there's any way that we could leverage some sort of ethical AI to do that, because I know that some other school districts are starting to do that. But barring AI, we also have Ms. Smith. And Ms. Smith is just about as good as AI when it comes to bus routes. Maybe not as quick, maybe not as quick. But she has done a lot of work with looking at bus routes, since I've served on the committee with her for many years now. And I remember when she first came to me, I thought she was insane, because she's like, we can do this, and we could do that. And I could see the numbers like going over, like, you know, like that meme. But she's right. And so if we could try to utilize some of that collective knowledge, I think that we can make it work.
We're always welcome to having the dialogue. If she wants to come in, we can go through it. I have no problem with that. But.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mrs. Feather. First, I want to say, Mr. Chandler and Mrs. Walton, you have done a great job. I don't want to undermine you in any way. I learned a lot of what I needed to learn by going into Mr. Chandler's office and having him stop putting those maps up, and then my numbers were flying over my head. So I do very much appreciate that. And the other thing is, the budget, we have increased the budget every year. It's not a matter of cutting the money. It's a matter of, we've had, we've gone through two contract changes now and increases since COVID. We had to renegotiate, and then we just had to sign another one. We continue to try to find savings, and I think that there's still a few areas that we can look at with Durham. I don't think it's a case that the school department has cut back on the bussing. We did find those savings before. I think that we can still do it now, and I think the area that we need to look at are how we are bussing the two private schools out of Cumberland, one in the north side of Cumberland, one up in one socket. I think that if we can find a way to depot those students and put our students first, and maybe get that bus back. So I just want to continue to keep talking about it. I don't think that we'll need two buses. We already found one problem where they were charging us twice last year.
No, right now, we use one bus for Mount St. Charles and one bus for Mercy.
Correct. I think that we should be looking at whether or not we can depot and bring them into one bus to share between the two of them. If we have to drop their children off fifteen minutes early at a private school versus our children, we can leave at nine-fifteen for that, for the field trips, like you said. What do you do with these schools that aren't even there at nine-fifteen yet? They can't run those kids out the door for nine-fifteen. The earliest they're leaving their schools is nine-thirty. They're already getting, you know, cut back on their times. So whether or not they all have to come back at the same time is irrelevant. These children are leaving much later. They're not going on as many field trips. They're not having as many options. Our students in Cumberland, our public school students need to come first, and we need to find other solutions.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Just to review, we had talked about depot stops a couple of years ago. If you do it, you're going to change your policy. Right now, it's against policy to depot.
So.
Policy meeting on the twenty-fourth.
So what I'm hearing is there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Bacon to revert to the pre-COVID, right? Pre-COVID times. However, Stephanie, if I'm wrong, please help me. For depot spots, that has to, depot stops, that has to be a policy change.
There is, however, still a motion, so unless Mr. Bacon withdraws his motion, we would need to, you would need to ask if there's a second to consider that motion. If not, then the motion can't move forward. But there is a motion on the table.
Okay, Mr. Bacon's motion is to revert back to pre-COVID times. Do I have a second?
I'd like a second.
Second. With Mr. Dean, any discussion? Dr. Thornton, Ms. Feather?
One more thing to think about, if you do pass this, the current contract with Durham is a penalty, where they pay a fine if they're late, later than fifteen minutes. I think you'd have to waive that unless you can figure this out, because they can't be held accountable to a penalty if you, they can't make it.
Ms. Feather?
That's a really good point. So we probably have to, definitely would have to take a look at that. Again, I do, I too, I want to thank you. I want to thank you. I want to thank you. I want to thank everybody for all the work that you do. It's not that we don't appreciate the work that you do. It's just that, you know, we are all contacted by parents who, for whom this is a hardship. And I think that with the motion on the table, the motion is just to go back to those times. We can start to, you know, utilize the different resources that we have to identify how we get there, and the things that we have to do, if we have to change a policy, if we have to, you know, come up with something else, if we have to. to, you know, come up with something else, if we have to, yeah, if we have to give up that, you know, the penalty or something like that. So I think that just the motion is just the intent for us to move forward with the new times and then the how can be worked out. I don't envy anybody working out the how and I apologize, but, but yeah, just wanted to say that.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may pose a question just for your consideration, if there are implications in terms of the contract with Durham that this committee should be mindful of, obviously that is not agended for today and we have not looked at it for today and for the purposes of this meeting. But I just, I think it's important for you all to consider that if this vote affects the district's ability to meet that contract, I would, it's a consideration. And I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's important to just raise.
A consideration that we can't vote on it?
No, as you consider your vote to consider, and if I may flag, it was, I think, a comment that Mr. Chandler made about, or sorry, Dr. Thornton made about a penalty, just being mindful of the effect of that vote on that contract.
Feather.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Stephanie. One question that I have is, since this is for the next year, wouldn't we, would we have time to work out that contract? Or any, would we have time to work out any contract with any of our vendors?
I'd say absolutely. To me, the bigger question would just be if you're adding buses or not and how you're going to pay for them.
Ms. Mr. Bacon, Ms. Okay. Ms. Smith.
So I know that we would have to look at that. I'm not sure if we'd have to add buses, but I think that we have enough people around that we really should be looking. We have a little bit of time. I'd have to go back and look at the contract. Durham has a lock time on when they're supposed to deliver the school bus schedules to the school department. And then that gets reviewed and then it has to go to the police department. So there are different layers and that is in the contract. However, I don't think that we're going to have an impact on that because every year they get delivered to as late anyways. So, you know, and we haven't held them to it. The fines are about delivery of the buses and that's something I'm sure Durham would want out of their contract. I wouldn't want it out completely, but I think that it's something that would probably be a little bit more amenable to work quickly with their lawyers on that part of it, just from knowing what that contract says and working on that specific topic. I was the person who put that in there to have them have penalties if they were late. So I think that we can definitely look at things like that and fix it. But, you know, we've got to be willing to work together and sit down and Durham's going to have to come to the table with us and they're going to have to show us things and work so that we can come up with it. Because unless we can answer the who, what, where, when, and why, we're never getting to the how. And Durham needs to be part of this conversation with us, not to tell us what they want, but to come to the resolutions that we need to get back to what we want.
Mr. Bacon.
I was pretty much going to say the same, that we, I think we have ample time in order to get together with Durham and be able to figure this out so it will work and I know it will work. That's all.
Mr. Dean.
One more real quick comment. I was on Little Pond County today coming back from Erin with my son and I was cutting it close to get to fiscal. I got to fiscal a little early, but, and I was behind a bus and it stopped probably every 100 yards or less. And, you know, elementary school kids in town are walkers if they live within three-quarters of a mile of the school. So we might be able to speed up the runs. What's that? Is it half mile? Heather, half mile or half mile?
Oh, wait.
For elementary, it's three-quarters of a mile. But Little Pond County is a road that you can't walk on. The police have deemed it unsafe. There's certain roads that you have to stop at each house.
I see, yeah, yeah, okay. I got you. Maybe we have to, maybe we hired just, you know, maybe the track team to be the bus monitors. They get on, they look under, they get back on the bus and.
Ms. Shay.
I just want to also just say it again and reiterate what I said earlier, that again, with all due respect to everybody north of 295, there is a ton of children that do not have access to vehicles and are walking to school in District One. And it seems like District One is being forgotten about when it comes to busing or proper transportation, especially during poor weather conditions or whatever it is that their situation is at home. So although I am for having more buses for the school department, I don't want to forget that District One is also in dire need of that and we've been in dire need of that for quite some time.
Thank you. Mr. Bacon.
So Ms. Shay and I have talked a lot about this, about the busing, especially in District One. And I think it is very important that when we have that discussion with Durham, that definitely 100%, we need to push that and we need to see what exactly they will do for us in District One.
Mr. Chandler.
So depending on how you vote tonight, is, and you're discussing changing policies and things like that potentially if needed, and in this conversation regarding the south side of Cumberland, is the discussion also on the table regarding changing distances?
I don't think there's discussion presently for distances.
So that, I'm just curious on some of the pieces as we start to have that conversation, if that's something that we should add as an option.
Okay. That's a good point. Thank you. I just have a question for clarification, just so I know. So you said if we change to pre-COVID times, there's a potential for lateness in the PM time or AM or both? And how many minutes would you guess?
I guess I'm, I don't know when you're talking pre-COVID time, like what times you're looking at.
Does anyone know what their times were? Sorry.
We are, we are talking about for Ashton Community and Cumberland Hill, we are talking about first bell at 8:45 and start time at nine o'clock.
And then do you have Garvin's time? Garvin and BF.
Garvin and BF. We are talking about keeping 8:15 first bell and 8:30 start time.
So the end time would then change by that 15 minutes? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
So it'd go from.
So Ashton Community and Cumberland Hills' end time would be 3:25.
3:25, thank you. Yes.
And then not changing the middle school times?
Do you have both scenarios or just one? I'm sorry. If you change the middle school times, what would be the lateness with the buses? If you didn't change the middle school times, what would be the lateness with the buses? And how many buses would that impact?
All of those things we would need to get back to you on. I mean, if we, we can, I would hate to give you wrong information or guesses on some of the scenarios. COVID, COVID is here. 8:15, 8:30. 7:15 to 7:55.
Yes, of course.
And I just wanted to say, like, when we tried to do depot stops for Mercy Mount, it was, those parents, because they, when we used to go through statewide, were picked up at their house. So now we make them walk to what our distances are and the parents were not happy. So you guys, I'm just going to, you're going to get calls and emails from them, just.
I appreciate that information. Thank you. And they're welcome to call me directly. I have no problem in saying my, my, my public school students that I represent come first.
I'll also co-sign on that. Same.
The other issue with that was some of the areas we were trying to do depot stops, the businesses wouldn't allow it. So we just need to be, we need to figure out some places that were around from the areas that, that we can use as a stop for them.
The good thing is we have school properties and town properties around. Right, right, Mr. Kinch. I appreciate all this information that you're providing though, just to give us complete transparency on what's going on. So I thank that. I thank you.
I think we're all, we all want to get to the same place. I just think that, you know, if, if there's things that come up, we just need to be able to provide solutions to them. Those solutions potentially could cost something. So we would need to, you know, be mindful of that. I know we have discussed before, you know, when BF Norton is completed, we're going to look at redistricting. So there's going to be efficiencies then too with, if you want to take up the redistricting with the middle schools for efficiencies. When you look at the number of students that are coming into Cumberland and then we call them out of district, it's really out of their home school. Students that have a choice to go someplace, they're picked up, you know, their families provide their transportation. However, students that come in after the start of school, that there's no spaces for them in those areas, we have to provide that transportation. So those also aren't something that we know about, but we've seen it every year, the last three years and that, you know, is ticking into on some of our time. So those areas like that, we won't know until that's there and we may potentially end up with some busing on that. But I think we can work through a lot of those things, but you just need to be aware that, you know, in the end, whatever the outcome is, we can look at it. We have a lot of construction projects to sum. We have a lot of things that are going on that we need to take care of. I know this will be a priority for you. But, you know, when we do look at redistricting, if the thought is to go out to, to somebody to take responsibility of it, because I'm not taking primary responsibility of, you know, coming up with a new plan or whatever else we're going to do, because we would have to agree on it, as well as Durham, who's responsible for it. So we need to keep that in mind. So if you are going to go out and have somebody do this and they do come back with different efficiencies and says that, you know, you're pushing them to the limit, you know, you may need three other buses, I mean, would you also consider that as, they're running now, but in order to run a little bit better, you may need some additional buses? So their recommendation could be that. Because we had an independent study done a number of years ago. We looked at it, we reviewed it and it came back that, you know, we're not being taken advantage of, so.
I appreciate that. Ms. Smith.
If I could just ask one more question. I know that the van transportation that happens and what we're paying for when we have to take them out of district, for whatever reason, I'm pretty sure that bill is being heard in the House or the Senate to increase the seating from eight to 10. So can that give us some savings in some ways? I'm not sure what the, you know, what the total amount is, but maybe that's something to look at too, if we have to do any shifting from being able to get a little bit of savings there with that transportation to applying it to something else that we may need, just.
Oh yeah, we'd want to take all that into consideration.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? So there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Bacon to revert back to, I'm going to say pre-COVID times with the new, with the start time for Ashton School, Community School and Cumberland Hill School, 8:45 first bell. Start time, excuse me, 9:00 AM. End time, 3:25. Was there any other pre-COVID times for any other schools I am missing if we do this motion?
We would need to know preschool times too.
Would the, so would these time changes that we're speaking of then impact the preschool times?
Do we have a, do we have a schedule? Do we have this pre-COVID schedule? Is there any? We have it? Yeah, please.
But those are all, those are all small buses.
If I'm reading this correctly, the high school would start at the same time, 7:05, 7:15. The middle school is 7:55, 8:05, that's what we are currently, thank you. The. Early two schools, 8:15, 8:30, which it is currently. The other three schools, 8:45, 9:00 AM, which would be a 15-minute change. And then the preschool, 9:40. However, the end time is 1:10. Oh, maybe that's, no, that's the afternoon session, excuse me, afternoon, no. Was that what it was, pre-COVID or no? Sorry, I don't know. Okay, okay.
So one of the.
With the PM, with the. Okay, so it's.
These are only the stop times.
Nap time, silly for four-year-olds.
Yeah. Thank you, sorry. Got to turn my mic on.
And the preschool start time, I'm noticing on the, on the sheet that's being passed around, that preschool start time was 9:40 and it still is 9:40.
It's the PM session. It's 1:10.
Oh, the PM session.
And I think that's where you're talking about the 4:15 versus.
How many buses are preschool?
All year.
Thanks. Okay. So it sounds like it might be an ongoing discussion for that piece of it? Yes. Yeah, sorry, my mic.
Right now, what was proposed is 12:45 for that afternoon session and what we had pre was 1:10. So what we're doing is we're looking at a 25-minute difference that we would have to push them out later and I think that that's the concern is instead of getting out at what used to be 3:15, they could be getting out at 3:40. I just, my concern is I don't want to make a motion for pre-COVID times and have the times be the 1:10. I want to make sure whatever we motion meets the times that we want and not arbitrary times that we're not sure of. Does that make sense?
Should we amend the motion?
No.
We can't amend the motion, there's been a second.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Madam Chair, I think what I'm hearing you say is that, I think there may be confusion on what you're actually voting for and so a yes vote by all of you may not mean the same thing, given, is what I'm hearing you say, right? Because pre-COVID times.
Correct.
May not be understood the same for everyone, right? We haven't narrowed down exactly what those times were.
If I heard Mr. Bacon, right, Mr. Bacon, please correct me. I think you said pre-construction, pre-COVID times. So when we, we just looked at those times, what I saw on the paper was the preschool was much later in the day, which I don't think was the intention, I can't speak to it, of the original pre-COVID. I think we need to do times versus time of, time of area, COVID, pre-COVID. However, we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion, we need to vote on this.
You can vote on it. You can vote on it or, as I mentioned earlier, Mr. Bacon, you could withdraw your motion. Mr. Dean, you could withdraw your second and then there could be a different motion that gets put on the record for you all to consider.
Okay.
If that's, if that's amenable to you all.
Mr. Bacon would.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Is that would. Okay. So the motion has been withdrawn. Ms. Smith.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to not approve the proposed schedule that has been presented to us by the superintendent, which will bring us back to, going back to the table. And we can address that at the next meeting, but right now, I think. And we can address that at the next meeting, but right now, I think my preference is just to vote to not approve what has been proposed to us as a school committee.
So you're motioning not to approve these times, but not to approve any times?
Correct. We're not going to talk about what that'll have to happen.
Okay.
Once we get all the information, but this way we can at least stay where we want to stand.
So I have a motion not to approve the recommendation of the times on the table, but not to approve any times. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bacon. Discussion. Ms. Goldstein?
So what I'm understanding of this motion, voting for this motion means that we are doing work in the next two weeks to come up with something more specific related to times and information regarding what's possible with Durham, so that we can, we can see what is possible potentially for us to go back to.
I think if we, let's say this passes of no times, I think Dr. Thornton needs times for the schools, so he'll propose new ones, but I could be wrong.
I would just say, I don't think two weeks will get this done. This is a lot of work we're talking about, and we're, this is a big concept we're talking about. So I think it'd be more than two weeks.
Dr. Thornton, four times of schools, what is your ultimate need to know in order to get schools on track for the beginning of the year and for parents to know and for teachers to know and for everyone to know?
I think it'd be now, but I, me, back in the 2008, I think we had a bus problem in Cumberland where something like this happened, and the bus times weren't figured out, and the school year began, and we had a problem. So that's my concern, but we really need to know, like, in June. You know, I'm concerned with the amount of time, things you're talking about, and the team we have, this is not going to get done in two weeks.
Ms. Smith?
I'm not sure we have to have all of the little things worked out, policy, whatever it may be. I think that what we have to do is set the times, and from what I was hearing, we could not set those times because there was still some questions that needed to be answered. So my goal in saying that I would vote against what has been proposed to us this evening from the superintendent is the underlying, you need to have that other information so that we can set those times and go back to what Mr. Bacon was saying, and I think what many of us wanted to support, and that is the rollback on the time, but we need to see what some of those issues may have been. And then we have to work on the issues.
I think the easiest thing for me to think about is if you went back to those times, we would model it, it would be back to you probably in July, but I'd prepare you to be adding buses. That's all I'm saying. It'd be a bus add, but you'd have the times. It's just a question of budgeting, to me.
Any further discussion? Okay. So the motion on the floor with the second is to not approve these times and not to approve any times, and next meeting have new times. Correct? Motion by Ms. Smith, second by, who seconded it? Thank you, Mr. Bacon. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes seven to, that passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda, new business discussion and a vote to approve agreement with Joblot for CHS trade work experience.
We have our special ed team here to talk about this opportunity. I'm not sure who's taking this.
Tammy, I'm a U trade teacher. Part of our process for working the trade program is working with community businesses and to provide some unpaid and hopefully lead to paid opportunities for our students. For, in a lot of cases, we can just talk to them, and agreements can be made with, you know, nursing homes and that kind of thing. But when we start to get to more corporate, bigger places, they want bigger type contracts. And so I've been trying to work with Ocean State Joblot for several years just because they have some accessible entry-level positions available, and they're located all around Cumberland, which is great. However, they want a fancier contract. The contract was sent to Dr. Thornton and therefore to the attorney, and so we're just asking for that to be approved so that we have another partner to work with.
Thank you. So there is discussion, a vote to approve agreement with Joblot for CHS trade work experience. The pleasure of the committee?
No, I was actually just going to make a motion, so if you want to.
Ms. Smith, do you have a question?
Actually, this is for our legal counsel, and I wasn't sure. And this has been reviewed and already gone through all the processes that we need to go through.
Mr. Adams approved it.
Okay, so it's been vetted, insurance, everything like that, anything that we have to worry about?
It's our insurance. It talks about that in the contract.
Right, and I believe that they have to be named as a party, and that's common, I think, with legal agreements, correct? Just wanted to make sure I answered the process.
I think it just talks about our insurance carrying.
Yeah, carrying, right, they have to be named as one of the payees for, thank you.
So I just wanted to say that that is common, so any company that we go to, we have a certificate of insurance issued in their name.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was all vetted with our legal counsel and that there's no questions that are still out there.
Ms. Feather?
I think that whatever we can do to continue to help your programs, we should be doing. So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Ms. Feather makes a motion to approve the agreement with Joblot for CHS trade work and experience. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. You, you're welcome. Thank you. Vote on CTA contract MOA regarding elementary and preschool meeting times.
This was discussed in executive session, just looking for your vote.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Ms. Goldstein. There is no discussion on this one.
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve the 2025, 2026 calendar year, school calendar, to include three-day weather waiver as approved by Ride.
As you recall, every year, we have to ask Ride for permission to get the three-day waiver. As you know, we have more minutes than we need. Ride sent the letter, we are approved. So essentially, if we have three inclement weather days next year, the first three, we do not have to make up.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have? A motion by Ms. Feather? Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. There are 17 resolutions, as we discussed. All did pass fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, so I will now go through every single one individually.
Just kidding, Mrs. Feather.
She was going to get me back.
So, yes, so the resolutions are SCPR 06-2025-49 through 65, and I would move passage of all.
Ms. Smith makes a motion to approve resolutions SC-PR-06-2025-49 through SCPR-06-2025-65. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve payment of bills. Ms. Smith?
Yes, we have our payment on the bills in the amount of $2,394,416.44. This was discussed and did pass in fiscal subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I have a motion by Ms. Smith to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $2,394,416.44. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dean. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Dr. Thornton, do we need to go into executive session?
No, all set.
Thank you. Vote, no, not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes.
Motion by Mr. Bacon. Second by Ms. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That, we adjourn at 8:40 PM on July 12. Thank you.